Welcome to Silver City Planning and Zoning Commission for Tuesday, September 2nd, 2014. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Regents. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic under the same name that we have the right to. Okay. Okay. Mrs. Endicott, if you would like to do a walk. Here. Commissioner Stephen.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferby.
Yes.
Commissioner Seibel. And moving on to tonight's agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda? And are there any amendments, changes, additions, approvals?
None.
It's fine. Are there any to approve? And will it approve the agenda as stands?
Aye, aye.
Okay. Are in favor?
Aye.
Are all opposed? Okay. And approval of the minutes, which is looking back to May 6th. Do you have a chance to look those over?
Yes.
And everything with the minutes from the last meeting. No changes, no required. So I move that we approve the minutes of May 6th, 2014. Now second it. Okay. In favor? Aye. Okay. Minutes passed also then. All right. As we have no other business, this evening, we're going to be having a public hearing. It's VA-14-2, a request for a variance to allow an open carport to remain within the required setback. The property addressed as 2209 Cactus is located on a tract of land described as Lot 5, Lot 26 of the Silver Heights addition to the town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico. The applicant is Katie, and I don't want to miss pass it. Is it Kinsello? Thank you. Oh, no. And one of these work is that first we'll hear from staff, and then we'll give a presentation. And then whoever wants to speak will be allowed, who is speaking in favor of the applicant. And then anybody who would be opposed is allowed to speak. Anyone who does want to speak, you do need to come up and take an oath. Taking oath does not mean you have to speak, but if you think you might want to, if you would come forward, and we will go ahead and do an oath. Let's pray you in. Anybody want to speak inside?
You don't both have to speak, but you're not entitled to speak if you don't swear it.
There's no problem for you. I'll come and make the oath, and then you don't have to. You don't have to stand there.
Charles, you do to us.
All right. Okay. If you want to repeat after me. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Peter Russell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
Will be the truth, the whole truth.
Will be the truth, the whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
On penalty of perjury.
On penalty of perjury.
Thank you. Do you have anyone change? And then part of this, I also need to ask the commissioners if anybody has had any ex parte conversation regarding this hearing.
No, I have not. Neither have I.
Okay. Then I guess if we can have staff come up and give a presentation.
VA-14-02, I apologize for the typo. And it's a request for a variance to allow an open carport to remain in the required setback. It's at 2209 Cactus, and it's Katie Kinsello is the owner. This is a subject property, and this is the carport. It was built recently by a contractor who, Mrs. Kinsello assumed that had a building permit. She was not aware that there was no building permit for the structure. This is her next door neighbor directly to the north. You'll notice that they have pretty much the same style of carport that was built before this land use code came into effect. You'll notice the spacing between the two, the adjacent home and the carport, is somewhat similar to the one that Mrs. Kinsello had erected. And we have spoken to the fire marshal, and with a little adjustment to the roof and fire rating of these posts, he would be fine with it remaining where it is. This is another neighbor on the same side of the street with a similar carport. There is a street adjacent to their property, so there isn't a structure there. And this is a carport across the street from Mrs. Kinsello's, but also you'll notice this little storage building next to it. They're also similarly situated in the setbacks, and they've been existence longer than the land use code has been updated. And this is somewhat similar to the other cases that you've heard recently. The only difference is a building permit was not obtained, such as the one that happened in May that you heard, because Mrs. Kinsello assumed that there was one. She had hired a contractor, and it wasn't obtained through the town. So she was under the assumption that all of the paperwork was taken care of, and she was willing to make adjustments to keep the carport. And this is the same analysis as the previous hearing, where the carport has to be at least 20 feet back from the closest edge, which it does meet in this case. And it also has to meet the side setbacks. That's the one that this carport is infringing on, is the side setback. And this is a section of the land use code that allows a variance for a structure to be built if strict enforcement would result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships. If Mrs. Kinsello was not allowed to seek a variance, she would have to tear the carport down and move it. So if she is allowed to have a variance, she can keep the carport she has, she just has to put in some fireproof soffits and change the pitch of the roof. And the findings are the same required, seven findings for a variance. Would you like me to read them into the record, Madam Chair?
I would.
The Planning and Zoning Commission shall only approve a variance if it makes the following findings as required by the Land Use and Zoning Code, Section 6319D. The hardship of which the applicant complains is one that is unique to the applicant rather than one suffered by the neighbors or the general public, and the hardship relates to the applicant's land or property. Number three, the hardship was not created by the deliberate action of the applicant or by one under his control, and reasonable remedies are not presently available. Four, granting of the variance is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. Five, the granting of the variance is in harmony with the purposes and intent of the land use code. Six, the granting of the variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood surrounding the property where the variance is proposed and is otherwise not detrimental to the public welfare. And seven, the variance will not result in the extension, expansion, or enlargement of a nonconforming structure in violation of Article 7, and will not authorize the initiation of a nonconforming use of land. And I would like to go through them one by one with a staff opinion on the findings. The hardship is unique to Mrs. Kinsello because she thought that she was following the correct procedure, and she thought she had a building permit, and she also was building something that she saw in her neighborhood. So she was not aware that she was breaking any land use code rules. Number two, it does relate to her property. She is the owner. Three, it was not created by the deliberate action of the applicant. She and reasonable remedies are not presently available. It was created by her contractor, but the applicant was not aware of that. And reasonable remedies are available, but to the extent that the carport be modified as a condition of the granting of the variance. Variants is provided for in the comprehensive plan and the land use code, so it does follow along in line with them for five, four and five. And will not be injurious to the neighborhood. You'll see that there are several other carports of this nature in the neighborhood, and her next door neighbor has written a letter in support. We have had no negative comments from the neighbors that were notified of the variance. And it won't result in an extension, expansion, or enlargement of a nonconforming structure. It will bring the structure that was constructed into compliance with fire code and the land use code. And it's the opinion of staff that if the carport is allowed to remain, it must be compliant with current building code and fire code regulations. So the fire marshal wants, you'll notice in your report that he wants fire rated soffits on the side facing the other residence, and also the poles need to be treated or moved. So that would be up to Mrs. Kinsello and her contractor to bring them into compliance, and the drawings would be approved by our building inspector and the fire marshal. Do you have any questions? Or would you like to see a photo again?
I have some questions.
Sure.
And the written materials that were presented to us, there weren't, it wasn't anything about setbacks from the side, the property side. All it talked about was 20 feet back from the closest edge of the right of way of the street. So would you like me to move on?
It's the five feet from the property line.
And so that is what is not in compliance? It's not the 20 feet?
Right. It's the five feet. It's the fire separation setback between that carport and the structure to the north. I'll let me show you the photo again. Okay. This is the carport, and there should be five feet between this carport and this structure. And the property line is somewhere right here by this wall. So that's the setback that it's encroaching into.
So the setback is a five foot from the nearest building. It's not from the property line?
Property line.
Oh, it's from the property line?
Mm-hmm. But the fire marshal, that's why he was okay with it remaining if the soffits under this side of the roof are fire rated material and these posts are fire rated material.
But the rule is five feet from the property line?
The variance in this case.
Okay. All right. Any other question?
My interpretation of the hardship that the applicant complains would not be that they didn't follow the rule, and therefore they would have a hardship if they had to follow it. I thought that the hardship would refer to, they would experience some hardship if they didn't build this thing, not in compliance. So I was surprised at your interpretation of that.
That would be something for you to decide, and the contractor is also here. You can ask him. He has sworn in.
How do you interpret this, the meaning of the hardship?
The property owner hired a contractor and was under the assumption that everything was built to the land use code. The contractor has been cited into municipal court by the building inspector, and so that is where the hardship upon Mrs. Kinsello fell. But you have the decision to make of if someone under her control caused the hardship, and that is finding, I think it's number two. Okay, number three. The hardship is not created by the deliberate action of the applicant or by one under his control. So if you feel that her contractor was under her direct control, then you can't meet finding number three.
I agree with that. I'm just wondering about what kind of a hardship is with the applicant? So the thing that's unusual in this case is typically a building permit would have been applied for. The building inspector would say, oh, this is in the side setback. We would need a variance to do that. So then the person would come before you, before the garage was, or the carport was constructed, and say, I'd like to get a variance for this. And then you'd say yes or no, whatever, depending. But in this case, it's after the fact. So it's not the owner's, the owner believed everything was approved, and it hadn't been approved. So in, to a certain extent, the hardship is not their own creation, because they were trying to follow the rules. They just assumed it was taken care of. The other hardship element here is if you go and look at the lots in the neighborhood based on the slides, you'll see that many other buildings have, in fact, the exact same structure. The side setbacks are typically a fire separation issue, or, you know, preventing someone from building so close to your building that your bedroom was looking into their bathroom or something, you know, just having a little distance. But then, if the neighbors are fine with the situation, and the fire marshal is okay with adjustments in materials, then the underlying basis of the five foot setback is obviated to a certain extent. The issues that the setback provides for have been addressed. The front setback is a more important issue from the town's point of view, because what happens is if the carport or the garage is like, say, 10 feet from the property line, then very commonly, the garage gets full, and people start parking in front of the garage, but half the cars on the sidewalk. So we're pretty rigorous about trying to keep that 20-foot setback for the garage. The side setback is much more accommodating to the circumstances of the neighbors, the neighborhood, what kind of other structures are there, and the potential for locating, you know, some kind of shelter for a vehicle. If the permit had been applied for, you would be hearing this before the fact rather than after the fact.
And so, I still don't understand how we are supposed to interpret hardship. I always thought that the hardship didn't refer to, oh my gosh, I didn't follow the rules, and now it's difficult for me. The hardship was, oh, I have a disability, and therefore I need to have this carport go in this direction so that I protect it from the weather, or those kinds of things, but not, I mean, if we interpret hardship this way, then anytime anyone didn't know that there was a rule, that they didn't follow, they could say, okay, now I have a hardship.
I think that's an excellent, I think that's a good point. I really do. I think that's a good point. I think that is perfectly reasonable to point to the hardship and say, three other buildings adjacent to it have the same feature. And so to not be allowed to have what the neighbors have is a hardship. I think you could reasonably say that.
But that's what I'm saying.
I have a point about sort of, you know, asking for forgiveness after the fact is problematic. I mean, there's no doubt about it. In this case, in this case, the owner, however, did not know. But I think that you could make a basis for saying this is a standard feature in that neighborhood. And one of the sort of zoning protections that are provided by the land use code is to maintain the neighborhood in the form that it currently exists. And since the carport's a common feature there, and since largely the setbacks are tied to, you know, fire separations, and the fire marshal is all right with it, I think you could make a case that a hardship would be, be denied the ability to have what the neighbors have. I think a fair case could be made. But again, you all are the judges on this.
Thank you. I have a question. One is hard to tell from the picture, but it looks like that the five foot setback that doesn't address goes right to the property line, but does not encroach over the property line. So there's no overhang?
Correct.
Okay. And the second thing is this destruction not being compliant with the fire, the fire code. In order to make it compliant, the soffits you're talking about in the post, is there a dismantling that will have to occur to retrofit it?
Question from Mr. Nieto, and it also will be, they'll have to change the pitch of the roof to meet the building code, so there will be a little rework.
Okay.
When Mr. Nieto testifies, that would be an excellent question to ask him.
And would we order from either our staff or the fire department to check at the end of the?
Because a building permit will be issued, and so Mr. Farley does do inspections throughout the process.
To check at the end of it?
Yes. And then she could always have the fire marshal sign off as well, and you can make that a condition as well, that both the building official and the fire marshal sign off on the finished product.
Any other questions from any of the commissioners?
I'm not really. I want to hear more. I'm really cranky about this, but I'm baring my tongue for now.
Does the applicant want to come forward and speak to any of those? It might be a good idea to speak to the one we discussed, the hardship one. Staff did an excellent job of growing up with them. If you introduce yourself.
My name's Tommy Steele. What did you want me to ask?
Could you speak to the issue of the hardship that we were just discussing?
Just that we thought we had the permit, and we didn't.
Okay. Then I guess maybe you could, it is the applicant's responsibility to make sure you meet those seven findings that have been over. We certainly did a pretty good job of coming for you tonight, but it would be good if you could discuss, because we just have the conservative commissioners, that had you gone for a permit originally, okay, what would be the reason for getting the variance, wanting the variance?
If you want to read the file, I don't have any questions.
Okay. The reason why we wanted the carport is because it was very slippery in the meantime. So my mom decided, let's go ahead and get one. So we did, and then we just didn't, we didn't have the permit. We thought we had it, because Hugo said he was, he had it all taken care of. So we went ahead and had him do it. And then we found out later that he didn't do it, the permit.
So he actually told you he was going to get a permit?
Yeah. So he was going to take care of it all the business.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? And we have a few more questions. Well, I'll start with, as a follow-up of what Mr. Russell said, I agree that there's, when it encroaches to the front, there's a safety issue, but encroachment to the side, as long as the fire element is taken care of, is really about cohesiveness with the neighborhood. I happen to live in this neighborhood, and I do know lots and lots of people have that exact same kind of carport. It's just common everywhere there. So I accept that, yeah, this person would not have the same thing that their neighbors had, and that it doesn't alter the cohesiveness, and in fact, it blends in more with the neighborhood now, in a sense, you could actually make that case easily. I do want, as a side note, state, just for anybody who's listening, now, I know that the average citizen has no idea what's involved when they're doing construction. You don't know, and that's why you get a contractor, and hopefully it's a licensed contractor, and they're supposed to be experts and know that. And one hint for people to know is if they have to get a permit, it has to be posted somewhere that's visible. So if there's no, if they don't bring a permit for you to post in a window or post someplace on a sign, then they probably do not get that. So that's just something for you and anybody who else is out there listening to be aware of, because you do go to the person, assuming that they are the expert, and they're taking care of you. So any other comments, questions, anything?
Sir, I might have missed this part. This is a licensed contractor? This is not a licensed contractor?
License, sir.
So they hired a licensed contractor who did not get a permit for the structure? I would love to ask him some questions.
Hello, my name is Avonieto, and thank for everybody to be here for this meeting. Go ahead and ask your questions. So I have a real problem with this, because we have some very nice property owners that are here with the project, that if they had come beforehand and asked for this variance, I would not have thought twice about us granting this. But I have a real problem with this happening after the fact like this, and you could be really nice for, you know, and say, well, that I, super frustrated. So I did apply for a permit, and I was denied, so, and I, and I thought I was, I was gonna go ahead and get away with it, but I didn't, so. And then, I'm going to be honest with you, I did it because I was two and a half months with no work, just nothing. And then without frustration, with my wife getting stressed, trying to cover the bills, I go ahead and do it without permit. And then after, after it was built and done, I talked to inspector, and inspector told me that there's a process to follow to build one of these kind of carports, so. But I was, I asked for permit.
And so what's the name of your construction company?
Avonieto General Builder.
Thank you.
Did you cause a lot of permit listing?
Probably because of setbacks.
At the previous hearing, it, they would have had to have this process before the structure was built.
So simply the design had been encroached in that, not the five foot setback, and would have required a variance, which could have delayed the project by a couple of months.
Yes, with the public notice requirements and that.
Do you feel that would be just as useful, if it were five feet?
No. Because if you can see in the picture, if you remove the post base five feet, then it's going to be right in the middle for the cars, but.
No, I cannot see that that would be in the middle of the car.
And then it's going to be hard for Mrs. Kinsello to.
How wide is the carport?
Probably about, and inside is probably about 11 feet. And then plus, I give.
But you know, how wide?
Now, ordinarily, when we consider one of these applications, there's a little drawing and, you know, the footprint and that sort of thing. We don't have that this time.
Okay. Any other submitted other?
And for the carport, are there? So they would be submitted for the building permit with the remodel of the carport?
Oh, with the remodel of the carport.
No. No, because it's going to need modification in order to meet the building permit.
I just want to know if they need to be part of the materials used.
No, it'll be different.
Will you be doing the modifications to meet the fire code?
Excuse me.
And that gets right to my question. If you had to change the pitch of the roof, and you have to modify the soffits, it says also modify the posts. Would that require you to have to move those posts? How do you modify the posts?
We can stucco it with a stucco base, flexible base, stucco, and that's the fire proof. And then the soffit, we can put metal on there. And then for the slope of the roof, I cannot know nothing, because if they go it more, it's going to hit the wall. It's already there, the rock wall. So I had to put some metal roof that it's, it's going to meet the coats for that slope.
Okay.
I'm sure that last time, I agreed, and if you use a metal roof, then you can have a longer slope. So the slope won't have to change if you change the material.
If there's no more questions, I would entertain a motion, just so you know, because you missed part of the discussion, so it would be Commissioner Ferby and Commissioner Stephen and I. It's been just three sort of fun, but does anybody have any more discussion, or does anybody want to make a motion?
I guess I wonder what hardship we are damaging here.
Can anybody help me with that? Well, to me, I guess you already went over getting in and out of the car, just like we've had in the past, when it's raining and it's weather, and having coverage to get to your house. And it is unique to her because it was. And it is unique to her because all of the neighbors that have them, so that is met for sure.
The hardship, the...
Yeah, there's two things with hardship, there's one that says it has to be unique to the person. So I'm just asking, the hardship is, you're saying, country kids, that's what it said at least, for being able to get into the house out of the car without worrying about slipping and weather.
So you would need a carport, but not one you would need on the property line?
But if you look at the picture, just from, if you can imagine, if they make that narrower, you have people in the car looking how to get their doors open to be able to get out. I mean, you'd have to have a, I've seen garages that are like that and people can't even get into a garage. It has to be a certain width beyond, you can't think of, oh, the car fits and there's extra room, there has to be extra room for the doors to be able to open. And to me, just a glass anyway, that would be kind of typical to meet that requirement.
Just for where houses are built in the neighborhood, you mean, in terms of what setback initially was between the houses?
Just for a little what you understand, we have with the one car. And if you look at the other ones, to please send us pictures of the other ones, it would be similar.
Without dimension, that I don't know how you can compare.
Yeah. Well, if you look at the car, the car has got a little bit of storage.
Are you saying that it should be moved in? I'm just asking what hardship we're going to evaluate here.
I think you have to determine if it is a hardship or not. You can't, you know, you know, there's a setback and the shelter, the rain, something that has a hardship to justify this.
Well, but you might be able to go with the five-foot narrower.
Well, but I don't think you can open the doors then.
Maybe, but I'm just trying to mention that.
Right, so that's our fault. And we don't have a drawing for it, but if you look at the car, you can see the car is typically six feet wide. And, you know, it would be unfortunate if our own forthcoming, you know, was the reason that the request failed. But I think that the hardship has to be measured against the purpose of the side setback. And the side setback is for fire protection, which has been addressed in this case, and for conformity with the neighborhood and the other neighbors have it. So I think that balancing the fire separation and the conformity of the neighborhood versus having a carport are one that is easily used, how those rate.
Well, I agree with Nick, it would have been easier had the variance come first and then the permit because it was probably right for an approval for that variance given the conditions on the ground.
Madam Chair, I won't be voting in a cat and make a motion, but it does, I don't, I don't want to punish the resident because again, this is, this is a homeowner who did everything right. I mean, I would feel very differently about this had it been a situation where, you know, they had knowingly jumped up and done something. But on the other hand, I certainly hope that there are repercussions for this because this is exactly the kind of situation we are not supposed to find ourselves in and that a homeowner is not supposed to find themselves in. And so, I mean, maybe it's not fair, it's definitely not fair to hold the homeowner responsible for that, but, you know, I just don't know.
Certainly. And there was a repercussion because they sent him to court and he was fined $1,100 for the carport. So now he has to pay that fine, so he made nothing on the job. So there was a repercussion.
Thank you. And I guess in a sense you can't say there still is a hardship if a person is using what they consider to be a legitimate contractor and they're doing a project, they have to assume they're doing everything right. She didn't even know she would have to get a variance, she had nobody knowing that because you trust your contractor to do that, but they're supposed to be telling you. So she's doing all these steps and now it would be a hardship and I already, it's probably going to be timing, you know, effort and everything else and just having more construction going on in her house. And to tear it back down would be, I think that's sort of a legitimate, even though it was after the fact, I think that's also a legitimate part of the hardship. And I think that that can be considered because it is through no fault of your own that it occurred.
But in a sort of, it can be so interesting, like in any case, when the homeowner hires a licensed contractor, the building permit isn't obtained or anything else is done, it's not the homeowner again, who is responsible for that.
It's a good idea to go to an expert.
It's not very expert, I would say yes.
Unless it would be, it could be some unusual circumstance.
I have cases when a citizen comes and says, well, I just, I didn't know and I had a licensed contractor and we shouldn't have all this stuff, sounds like.
How much should a legitimate person believe that they did know? I think you could apply based on some of the other ones.
No, Mr. Nieto and I were saying to him, he actually tried to tell them he had received a building permit. So Mrs. Kinsello was told by her contractor that there was a permit. So that's a little bit of a distinction there also. And he was, he did say that on the record and he did present that as part of the record.
Well, if I make the motion, you're going to have to help me through that rather tools of all we're on here today. I make the motion that we approve the request for a variance DA 14-02 to allow an open carport to meet anything the required setback. The property address as 2209 Cactus is located on a track of iron described as 5 block 26 of the Silver Heights addition to the town of Silver City, Blanca County, New Mexico. The applicant is Tiddy Kinsello owner and it would be with the condition that the permit be obtained for the new metal roof, for the fire code soffits that are needed for the posts and the side and that the building and fire department sign off on the finished And then do we have a seventh?
No, that's a first, but okay. You can just say that you feel that it meets the seven.
I feel that it meets, as read earlier. Yeah, as read earlier based on the testimony of staff.
One second. Okay. So we have a motion to approve, we have a second. And Stephen, if you can do a word of vote?
Stephen?
Aye.
Commissioner Connick?
Aye.
Commissioner Kirby?
And I think we have no more business, we do not have a community forum. Do we have reports from staff?
We will have an item on the October agenda, so I'll be getting that to you via email.
Good, okay. And can we, I think we do have something from Commissioner Stephen?
Yes, I just want to remind everybody that this Saturday downtown from 11 to 2 will be the Taste of Silver City. You can get your booklets of tickets, 20 tickets for $18, it's a good price. And you can eat your way up and down Borden Broadway. This raises money for the main street project overall.
Thank you. Anything else? A new project?
A new project?
Do you have a second? Or do you want to go?
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Thank you.